Let's get going here. Welcome to the planning board meeting for Monday, July 27, 2015. Thank you, H. Cam, for taping the meeting tonight. We are missing a couple of members, so that's always helpful. We are attempting tonight, potentially, to remote-call in, which is allowed by the rules, for one of our members, Frank Durso. However, we've been unsuccessful so far in getting a hold of him, so we'll see where that goes. The agenda tonight, we've got a bunch of small, interesting things. We have one major public hearing continued for the Marathon Solar. And then the last thing I'd like to do in starting the beginning of the meeting is we are looking for volunteers for the zoning advisory committee. And basically, that committee will start meeting in September time period, and it makes recommendations to the planning board for zoning articles. And that's part of our process for keeping our zoning bylaws up to date. So anyone interested in volunteering or wants to know more about the zoning advisory committee, either contact myself or Elaine, and we'll be happy to, or any member of the planning board, really, and they'll be happy to kind of explain what goes on there. So, anyway, we're looking for 10 to 12 people, as active as possible. That's what we've had the last couple of times. So, let's start off. We have a conceptual plan for 25 Ash Street. Chuck and Crowder?
Evening, folks. Joe Magron, Brian Gassit. What we had hoped to do tonight was take a couple of minutes of your time, just to try and get, gauge the interest in a project that Brian is considering at 25 Ash Street. It's a 7.9-acre parcel on the east side of Ash Street, with an existing historic home here and barn, and then fields and lawn area associated with that use. We are about 400 feet southerly of Center School. And the chief advantage we see in moving this thing forward is the fact that we are in the RA district, and we can get a couple of attractive lots here, behind the existing home, and then provide something of value to the town in this area, in the rear, that Brian has no interest in trying to develop. I guess the key with this project is the connectivity. The abutter here to the north is the town of Hawketon. There are a couple of homes, the Camorellis home is here, a couple of the Pavlov and McMillan homes are here, but the abutter here at the rear is the town of Upkington, the Center School property. As you move easterly, you move from our parcel through what the town has taken that was associated with the open space plan for Presper Lane, Hotstone Road, and the open space to that, and then another piece of town land, and you are at the westerly border of Legacy Farms. Here is the Legacy Farm road south with Wood Partners and the Polte Development through there. So there exists a connection with this parcel that Brian would be willing to donate to the town to make a connection from Center School across this, over the N-Star easement, which is an easement over a Hain property but owned in fee across the town land. So the ability to cross N-Star, this parcel, and then hook up with a lot of open space heading easterly.
Let me ask one question. Would you kind of define where the three new lots would be, kind of, or all the new lots are real?
So what we wanted to do was preserve that historic structure here. So along the northerly boundary line would be a right-of-way to establish frontage and access to a way. We would like to construct a 12-foot-wide driveway that would give us one home out behind the historic structure and one off the end of that circle. So historic structure, two new homes.
And does this lot, is this the proposed lot line for this, or where's this line?
The thought process was that, as we moved through this, we'd have to do something to offset the changes chiefly for stormwater. So this is included in that parcel. We anticipate that if we do anything to satisfy concern there is about stormwater, it would be at this location. And then this parcel here runs up to here. So it would include that easement and then this access abutting the town land.
Okay, so then we would have access along here and then across, for sure.
Correct.
Right now, if you want to get over to this part of the school, you have to go across the fee, N-Star land. However, during the school process, they were reasonable about letting us go back and forth, but they wanted to negotiate the easement, too. But, I mean, it was, you know, they, but anyway, that's the only background they offer to that. And then from that, you can get, like, you can get eastward, I think, pretty easy.
Yeah, through.
Well, downhill.
Presper Lane, you've got Hotstone, you've got the town land here, this is Mezzet property, and then Legacy Farms. We're only looking for the two additional. There has been some talk about this abutting parcel being developed. We're not interested in joining with those folks, so we created, we're trying to emphasize to you folks that we don't want access off of this new subdivision road for additional lots in here. So this would be set up so that, and that area restricted, so that the owner of this could not sell off that excess land and create frontage and lots for the abutting property owner. We're simply looking for the two here, end of story.
How do you restrict that? Just put that in ownership of somebody else? What's the plan for that?
It would probably have to be determined to each of these separate.
Association?
Association.
The goal is, how we do it, we'll obviously have to figure that out, but the goal is to limit access from that property export.
Are we looking at a 40-foot-wide roadway or a 12-foot-wide driveway?
Right-of-way, 40-foot wide, and then 12-foot-wide driveway to access these two. Seemed overkill for a 20-foot or 18-foot wide surface for two homes. The idea was something in keeping with your regulations for subdivision that folks had seen before, so it didn't seem so out of the ordinary to ask for a 20-foot right-of-way or something like that. What we didn't want to do was get bogged down in the weeds later on, had we wished we'd set aside a 40-foot wide.
I think the 40-foot is what our regs say, and we could waive that to make it less, you know, because I'm not sure you need.
So, because he's showing the 40-foot wide, we're only looking for 12?
Yeah, so waive the construction standards, if you will, down to 12-foot wide. With the same sorts of issues, make sure that we can get onto Ash Street, safe-site distance, safe-stuffing distance, that we can construct this driveway, so that folks can't access their homes. But construct something a little less than the subdivision road.
So you're only going to be entering the property via the Ash Street?
Yes.
Correct.
So is that a private roadway?
I would say yes, that's probably.
You're calling it a road, not a private drive?
A roadway, because we need to establish frontage on a way.
They're going to ask for waivers not to construct a road, but just to, and then build something in line with the driveway, kind of like McDermott, I think would be the closest.
I'd just like to get some kind of assurances through town council that these kinds of restrictions can actually stand up. No, it just seems to me that once it's a roadway, it opens the door for people on the other side to say, "I have a right to build there."
I think what he was, they were doing, Claire, is, well, go ahead and answer it, I guess.
Well, what we, the concern was raised, Claire, as we moved through this, so the roadway, the right-of-way to create the frontage and access was shifted away from the boundary line, southerly, and a 10- to 12-foot wide strip was going to be set aside in there, owned by some group, association of the two homeowners, that was restricted, so that this gentleman could not sell this off to the abutting property owner and create access to the new roadway. So the mechanism is yet to be determined, but the goal is to limit, so that no activity, no lots are created off of this road, Road A, for abutters to the north.
No, I understand what you claim, what you stated you intended to do. I would just like assurance for this board that that can hold water from a legal challenge, that, you know, you couldn't get one of those, if you've only got a homeowners association of like two or three homeowners, and somebody's willing, you know, 20 years down the road to say, "It really doesn't matter to me," or "I'll pay you," you know. We've had more than one situation where, when there was a legal challenge, it didn't hold up. I just, I like the side of the assurances. I would just like assurance for this board from a legal perspective that that is sustainable. That's just a comment.
One or two people as an association might not be enough to stop what's going on.
Exactly.
I think it's a fair point.
I will make one other observation. I don't know how it might enter into your plans. I'm glad to see your plans are to maintain the existing Hain home at 25 Ash. It is historic. We've also passed historic preservation bylaw that in order to aid saving historic properties allows certain concessions, waivers, to be granted from standard requirements to facilitate that. So I'm just throwing that out as another, as another resource to move this forward that, you know, could help you possibly.
I think all the lots are creating, they're all of.
Standard.
Or meet all the square footage.
Yeah, all of the RA is owned, 15,000, 100-foot frontage, the standard is pretty low.
Yep. And even if you met them ones without water, in case somehow the town didn't give you water for those two back lots, I don't know. You know, you still meet the standard for that.
Question, how long is the dead-end street?
We have proposed now 394. So it will be with, depending how you want to define this animal, as we go through this every time, 394 at the center of the circle. So 50-foot wide, so 444. Shorter than the Catherine Drive roadway right next door.
How do members feel about this? I mean, you know, we, our standards for those are, Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, exceptional circumstances.
Yes.
And we've taken exceptional circumstances in the past with the gift of land to the town as one, and whether it's connectivity and things like that. I asked Ken Parker to come by. Ken, do you want to say something about this from a trails aspect, or?
So, you know, we're trying to connect the Upper Charles Rail Trail from Milford to Hopkin State Park and over to Ashland. And one of the ways that we are hoping to do that is to go down from the Center School over to Legacy Farms south, which would pass fairly close to this property, and perhaps actually, might actually require us to try to seek an easement from the property owners. I'm talking, I believe, here on the part that you're not planning on developing.
Well, we would get that land as part of that deal.
That wouldn't cover the town.
So that is of value to us in that regard. It may also be of value to us to get to that land by going off of Ash Street. So this trail is going to be a trail that would be open to the public, so it'd be of value to determine whether or not the driveway you're talking about would be one that would be amenable to having this continuous rail trail that goes all the way from Milford to Ashland in a loop around through also Sherborne and Hollston. Because that's one of the things that we're considering. So our other means of access to go down the hill is through the Center School. So just wanted to put that out, but we're certainly interested.
This plan here does not do your request to get from Ash Street to the back, I mean, basically.
Unless you come through.
Down the driveway.
But then you come into, right into the guy's front yard, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be running.
Yeah, I don't know where the front yard is exactly.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I wouldn't want to be.
Yeah, you.
That's why this was allowed, so we could come in.
So it would effectively block public access going that way, then?
Right, so the idea was that the access would be down through here.
Well, that is certainly possible.
This is going to be donated to the town. This would allow connection to the Center School.
Right.
See that?
Oh, yeah.
Cross and then into that associated with Presper, and this associated with Hotstone and more town land, and there's Legacy Farms. That would be the idea, is productivity through. That's it.
Yeah, so we could conceal the.
Okay, so other questions, comments, members of the public, members of the planning The only thing, and we don't have to decide this tonight, whether we take parcel B and have it as open space or in general use. In general use, when the town was looking to buy this parcel as part of the Ash Street school solution, they were talking about potentially using parts of parcel B as playground or other stuff. But that was a slightly different project, and that's not on the table at this point.
I was going to say, is it on the table?
It's not really on the table at this point, but Center School use, we don't know what we're going to do with it.
That's what I was going to say, we don't know what's going to happen with Center School, I mean, and all that back land, so, I mean, there's the connection there, but we don't know what's going to happen with any of it.
I think we'd be wise not to tie our hands on any account right now where there's somebody unknown.
Okay.
Not going for straight open space, just kind of leaving it open.
Just a general parcel.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. Have we defined that there is exceptional circumstance here in this case?
Well, that's kind of what we're doing tonight, in a way. I mean, we're not making a final decision, but we're trying to nod to him before he spends a lot of money to decide, to try and make a plan. Is the five acres, you know, big enough in this trail connection? You know, that's, a trail connection in five acres, is that an exceptional circumstance?
Offset.
Is that the offset for two houses that, in that area? I mean.
It is a significant piece of connectivity. I mean, it's not just a piece of land that's isolated. It links important things that we've been looking at in the town, so I think it's a valuable piece.
Go ahead.
Can one or two houses be built otherwise?
Not without.
No driveway, shared driveway scenario?
No, because they need frontage, and our bylaws state that cul-de-sacs are only allowed under exceptional circumstances.
So it's a one-house parcel?
It's a one-house parcel now, and the option is, if we want to have the land in back, we allow two houses.
And my question was, just quickly, having now looked at the proposed map here, is there a connection to possible trails over in Legacy Farms? Do you see the connection of land, or is there something still in the way?
Roger Mezzet's land, I think, is still in the way.
That's correct.
I mean, you could get to the back, the back little piece that's sticking out of Legacy Farms, but if you all remember, that's wet as can be back there, the 33 acres, you know. So, other feelings?
I would just add one more thing, that we were looking at that Center School site, looking at the 25 Ash Street. I remember seeing a potential plan that floated the idea of three houses down there as well to sort of sweeten the pot. It's not the first time the town has looked for putting additional houses in there to make the rest of the land work for the town, so, I mean, that doesn't bear on the decision. I'm just, you know, observation.
I think the difference between that, that was, the cul-de-sac would go through and loop over to the school.
Right.
And that would make it.
Different, but.
But similar.
You looked at putting some more house down there to make things work.
So is that trail option off the table? Doesn't sound like that's viable from your guys' perspective, if they were to come down on Ash Street. Is that a fair assumption?
Through the roadway is not, but this connection still is.
The back way through Central, Center School.
Right, so that there's access over this parcel and through, rights we have through the easement.
That work?
Yeah, well, I think it could. I mean, it depends on what happens to Center School. That's the only thing with that. Otherwise, from a geographic perspective, it would work.
I mean, there are obviously a lot of balls in the air, a lot of unknowns. The idea was to plan this ahead to allow something of value to come out of this project from the town side.
Without that linkage, the five acres is not.
Not as.
Not exceptional.
But, I mean, we control Center School, so if that's a connection that is important, you know, we could take a stand that whatever we designed for Center School has to allow that. We hold the cards.
Yes, we do. So, Claire, you're sounding okay with this plan? I'm just going to call the board. Fran?
I'm okay with it. But to your point in terms of council looking at the other side, I thought that was a fair, I think it's a fair request.
Sure.
But, I mean, outside of that.
Yeah, well, that could be a detail that you would do during the subdivision planning. If, you know, or we ask Ray one way or the other before that.
Yeah, it's subject to challenge.
Yep. I'm in favor.
Just a clarification question. Without this gift, the trail can't be connected?
No.
At all?
I don't know exactly where the property boundaries are there to know well enough, but I think it's quite possible that if we're all developed, then the trail would not be possible.
No, you could go through the Center School property.
That is owned by N-Star.
Yeah, but it's better getting down the hill without.
Sure. This is the back, just right over. So this cuts off the Center School from there.
With this parcel here, you can get through.
And this is town owned right here?
Correct.
This is N-Star?
Yeah.
Connection would be?
N-Stars said that they would let us cross for school purposes, so the trail was a lot less than that. But they wanted to, you know, they wanted an easement for school purposes, that, you know, thou shall maintain the distance between the wires and the ground.
That's the key, is as you get more sophisticated, they get more concerned about proximity of whatever you're proposing to their wires.
They're still concerned on the other, but at least you own it by fee, and, you know.
So that's a big assumption. I'm okay to consider it further, but I'd be looking for that at least.
John?
I'm okay with it.
Brian?
I'm okay with it under, you know, just, I mean, Ray looked at it, and he would like to see more, but, yeah, we can certainly afford with it.
Okay. I think you got a feeling in the committee?
I think it's shit candid.
Okay. I think we're now on, we're a little late, but that's okay. We've got plenty of time tonight. 112 East Main Street, the LaPage property. Come on up here, please. This is the four acres of parcel that the for-sale sign is on.
Yes.
And if anyone's interested in a horse farm, there's four acres, 4.4 acres for sale.
It is still available.
It's still available.
Yes, it is.
This abuts the commercial property on East Main Street that Legacy Farms has, so it's kind of, well, why don't you show us?
Yeah, it's kind of in the middle of things. I do have a look, I do a site plan if anyone's interested in looking at it from something that I did a few years ago. So there's a few copies of some of this little detailed lot.
Why don't we just spread one out pretty carefully?
I can show you on there, too, where I am. I don't know if that's near to everybody to see.
Yeah, I guess that might help, too.
Might help a little bit. I know my.
So a few handouts.
Basically, this is Joan of Val, obviously.
The real church?
Yes, exactly. My feedback, what the market's been telling us about the property, and some conclusions we've drawn from experience to date in our marketing efforts. The history of the property is such that Val has had it for almost 20 years. I'm not sure if that's the exact number, but she's used it as her primary residence, and she purchased it, and serves as the site for her horse training programs, both therapeutic and otherwise private lessons. Due to personal reasons, Val decided it's a good time for her to sell the property.
Well, I think it is, you know, personal reasons, but it's also, there is no way that I could put children or adults that are challenged, you know, both physically or emotionally, on horses with the amount of construction that's next door. Horses are horses, as you all know, and they spook. And it really was a huge factor for me to stop teaching there. I knew it was happening. It wasn't like it was a surprise, you know, but the time came that, you know, and now we're trying to sell it, and it's difficult. Anyway.
Just in case you're not familiar with the property, it's basically 4.43 acres. It's currently owned RB1, Use Code 104, which is two-family, as you probably know. There's a colonial-style home that was built in there in 1974, approximately 2,330 square feet of living space, 11 rooms, five bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms. The reasons it's used 104, there is an apartment on the lower level, multi-bedroom apartment with a full kitchen and a full bathroom. Basically, the reason for tonight's meeting, to give you a little feedback that we've been getting from the market, we've had probably, probably a little bit over 25 inquiries. It's definitely specialty property. It's not like we're getting a call every day, but we're probably getting two or three inquiries a week, plus or minus. About 80% have been from developers and even commercial use fires due to the size of the property. Most of the interest has been from people, developers interested in residential, modest-sized residential type redevelopment. There's also been a couple of inquiries, people with restaurants and even equipment storage, like excavators and excavator equipment operators and landscapers. The feedback has primarily, again, been from residential real estate developers. Most of them have in mind a maybe cluster-type development. This is not a specific rendering, but again, that's the sort of idea that developers have been telling us, I think, would be the best and highest use for this property.
For a garden apartment, it doesn't fit our bylaw, though, does it? There's only 150 feet of frontage, and it's only 4.4 acres.
It's 200 feet for a garden apartment.
And 10 acres.
10 acres.
With exceptional circumstances.
No, I was paying attention.
We haven't been getting that many inquiries from owner occupants, who, it'd be interesting continuing the horse farm use. I think, as Val's alluded to, the construction activity and the noise associated with it has really created a little bit of an issue in continuing that use anyway. Obviously, it's Lund 135, and that's always been a busy road. The deep setbacks and the fact it was previously bounded on two sides by open land, basically, gave it at least somewhat of a country look and feel, but, you know, with the developments over the last few years, that's kind of gone away. over the last few years, that's kind of gone away. And as you guys probably know, the commercial sub-district is going in right next door and across the street, the Village Center sub-district is going in across the street and down 100 yards. So the character of the locus has changed. Close you, let me not see exactly where it goes. It's next page. Shows how we're kind of in the bullseye of Legacy Farms. So that's just kind of driving us to come by tonight is that the fact that it's really changed the character of the parcel. Val would like to continue the horse farm if it was practical or even sell it to another horse farm type person, but the Legacy Farms, that prospects of that are not good. And we're hoping that maybe the town would consider Osmond type rezoning the parcel. So maybe a small cluster development or even commercial uses could conceivably go in there at some future date if we go buying the horse farm type buyer out there.
Roy?
Roy McDowell, I guess, just for full disclosure, I met with Valerie a few days ago.
Yes, of course.
And I actually drove by, stopped in to say hello, and we chatted about us considering possibly buying the parcel, not for commercial purposes, not for horse farm, but possibly nothing more than drip irrigation additional area, which means we would simply take down the horse farm, take out all the horse corrals, if you will, maybe leave the house and have nothing more than, you wouldn't even know it's there. It's just, it would be a lawn area, be like a big meadow with drip irrigation in the grass itself. And Valerie and I have further discussions where we're going to ask to come out and give support tests. If in fact it does work for that purpose, we may very well consider negotiating something Valerie to purchase that, but I hope you know that in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome.
Isn't the west part of your parcel wet? Isn't there a kind of a wetland on the western?
There's a very small, there's wetlands in the front and that's where I remember my people looking at the area. The only thing we'd require is running two pipes over there, nothing else. I mean, it would literally be a very small, but it's nothing but a drip irrigation, I think about like irrigation in your yard.
On that question, Roy, when that commercial parcel gets developed, whenever, garden buyer today, I recall a lot of it being wet. So how much of that is going to be cleared to the west?
Whatever you see cleared down is always going to be cleared.
So what is wooded right now is going to stay wooded, correct?
The majority of what's wooded now is wetlands.
Right. So it's not like this property is going to have your commercial development right up next to it. There's going to be a sizable vegetated buffer.
No.
That's what I thought.
The one thing we thought could make some potential sense is we're going to be doing drip irrigation under parking areas in the retail area. And we're actually going to do some more drip irrigation over Legacy Farms and the lawns and some of the homes over there. This would be an easier thing to do, to just run two pipes over and do drip irrigation in there, if in fact it parks. If it doesn't park, it doesn't matter. I just want to throw that out there. So in the next few weeks, if something happens, great, but not interfere with what you're doing, just.
No, we had this set up before you did stuff.
Yeah, no, it.
Was it yesterday? The day before is kind of.
It was Saturday or something. It was today.
What is today?
Yeah.
It's Monday, yes.
Yeah, Saturday.
It was Saturday, right.
So from a, from a practical standpoint, joining it into your commercial doesn't seem to make as much sense because of.
It wouldn't be commercial. It'd stay, you wouldn't need the zone change. It would just be.
I know, no, I'm talking about if you wanted to, I'll say creep the commercial distance westward.
We couldn't do it.
Because.
There's a slight wetland in between.
Okay. So, basically, I think they're asking an opinion as to whether they should go forward with that through the Zack process or the, you know, if it's a special town meeting, it's, special town meetings in the fall for zoning puts us kind of out of sync because we're normally into the May cycle. That doesn't say that a citizen's petition can't go on there, but I'm sure the selectmen are, would slap our hands a couple of times if we submitted one in the fall, but that doesn't say that if you're thinking about going ahead that way, we will, we respond to all citizens petitions by holding public hearings and whatever, but you can't wait till the last minute if that's the process. But at best, they're talking about, I think, a November town meeting. I, but I'm not the authority on that one.
Well, this is just one iron in the fire from Val's point of view. You know, the perfect buyer shows up tomorrow and falls, you know, has horses, needs to move in immediately. We'll probably move ahead with vigor down that path.
Yeah.
But again, just what people are telling us based on what the market feedback has been, seems like the line share of the interests is redevelopment, some sort of commercial, residential application. We could probably only get one or two houses in the way it is now. It is a two families. I'm thinking it's possible we could get two larger, two homes in there possibly, depending what the building is.
You might be able to get the houses off of Linden Street.
Yeah, that's another angle, yes.
You would have frontage on Linden. And the other part, I mean, you could get two houses without a zoning change for that. That'd be non-commercial and residential.
Right, right.
I mean, you've got, you've got an A and R problem situation, I think, because that part, you've got 450 feet.
Yes.
And that's RB, so that is 150 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got possibly three houses off the back. If you can do it with wet, I mean, there's a lot, it looks, I don't know, but.
Is it really wet back there?
It kind of shows that on this trail.
The real lot line.
Yeah, but.
So within the buffer area more so than I think it's really wet.
Right. I put a horse paddock in, I went to a conservation.
Yep.
Couple of years ago.
Yes.
Five years ago.
So maybe you can't get much off of that, that side, I don't know.
Another option though.
It's another option potentially.
Or maybe.
If, if you're obviously going for a zoning change, I would get the, your Linden Street neighbors and your other neighbors solidly on board because they will be the ones that will speak the loudest and be listened to the most at town meetings and the other, the hearings.
Right. So how is this not spot zoning?
The only way you would say it's not spot zoning is you've got the legacy commercials land right next to it.
I'll tell you how I feel about this.
Okay.
The legacy project was the result of a multi-year strategic plan that engineered an entire 700 acre piece of land and worked on modeling that put mixes of commercial and housing in, in a controlled area to produce a, a bottom line result for the town. It was master planned as an entire parcel of land. We didn't just willy-nilly pick a spot on East Main Street and say, we'll do that, it's a commercial. Every area that's residential, the residences have concerns of creep. There were concerns raised at the time of Legacy Farms. East Main Street is a busy street, but for the people who live there, it's home. I live on a busy street and a lot of people always want to make Hayden Row. Oh, it's because Hayden Row. No, it's not Hayden Row, it's our residence. And I think it's a very slippery slope to start picking individual parcels and because one person is encountering difficulties with the market, saying that justifies spot zoning. This is not a part of Legacy Farms. This is an individual, single property, and then it affects the properties behind. The creep starts up the street. I don't think we ever intended with the Legacy Farms development that East Main Street would creep into a commercial strip. We're very careful about that. In fact, there were five homes on West Main Street that decided that they wanted to be rezoned because of Golden Pond and all the rest, and they couldn't sell their house. And if they zoned it business, you know, that was going to solve their problems. They got those houses rezoned because it is part of a commercial strip, much to the neighbors dismay behind them. Not a single one of those houses has managed to turn over into commercial. The market hasn't been there for it. And it's not just this project, it's what does this say for every project down the road and every house down the road? That is a residential stretch and it always has been. And I just think it's, it is a clear case of spot zoning and I feel it's a slippery slope for the town to go down to try to advocate individual properties because of market, of market forces. I would not support this, but that's just my, that's just my opinion.
Does anyone else want to?
I agree with Claire.
Okay. Okay.
I'm, I'm on the fence on it. It could go both ways.
It's home to me too. I mean, I love it there. I just can't live there. There's no trails. I can't ride, you know, the, the noise is crazy. It has to be, I understand that. It is a stone's throw from, you know, my horses and, you know, there's the fear that people are going to come over and, and, which they do, by the way. It's almost like a street now.
I don't know.
Right, exactly. But, but it's home to me too, and I wouldn't be trying to sell it if I could stay there the way that I am still anyway.
Anyone else want to offer anything? I guess I'm kind of, I'll be on the fence type area, but really, I'd like to listen to what all your neighbors have to say.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. We haven't really done, at least I haven't, I'm not sure if Val started the ball.
Well, I've talked to my neighbor. I really only have one neighbor.
Well, this is big enough, this is big enough that you're going to get the Linden Street.
Yeah, I think everybody.
Yeah, Peter missed it, I know.
And, and all those, all those wonderful folks there that have been to a lot of our hearings.
Yes.
The only thing I'd like to add, I think we're primarily thinking of residential, which are not really commercial per se. I mean, we're just thinking of maybe something that fits in with a look and feel, which tends to be like cluster, at least the residential part seems to be cluster type development.
I'm thinking, just looking at the amount of wetlands that I saw on this map.
Yep.
You're not going to be seeing too many houses.
No, no, I don't think we're seeing 20 houses in there.
I think you're seeing more, like in this range type of thing, based on size and stuff. I mean, I just don't think you get very far.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for being back. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Good luck.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. It's a process.
Let's see this.
This is, oh, yeah, this is. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, we're running only a few minutes behind, but we've got plenty of time to catch up tonight. We're going to have the continued public hearing for the special permit application for Marathon Solar LLC, and this is on the solar permit and the stormwater management application. You going to try Frank again? Okay, we're going to, we're going to try. We are missing one member who can't vote. Matt can't vote tonight, but he's going to watch the tape if it gets continued. And then it depends on whether Frank.
You have reached the voicemail box.
No. It's not looking good for Frank. He somehow, the number he gave us, we keep getting voicemail from him.
No service where he's at.
So, so he can vote the next time around after he watches the tape. So we've got two, two folks with the tape and what else are we missing tonight? No, we're all set. Or we'll miss him, no, Pat's already out.
Six.
Right. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six. We have enough that we could vote tonight if we wanted to, but you'd have to get everyone's vote.
Okay.
Okay.
We want everyone's vote.
I understand.
Thank you for having us back.
And, and so anyway, where we left it the last time, I think there was three key items that, that were really outstanding on our outline. The first one was feedback from the Conservation Commission on the site layout. And they are meeting when next? When are you?
This coming Monday.
They're coming, meeting this Monday, the third.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, go ahead.
Speak to that.
Sure.
So since the last planning board hearing, right after that, we went back and met again with Conservation. There was some back and forth on the site plan, the plan, and ultimately, they gave us very specific direction to move the panels back from the wetland in the northeastern part of the site and the southwestern part of the site to the 75 foot setback, which we agreed to and have done and updated the plans per their specifications. I believe you sat in on the end of that meeting and they said that they were comfortable with, with that plan, that, that approach for the, for the plan and at their next hearing on Monday, that they would then, you know, consider the new plan and assuming it met what they told us to do, they would, they would vote it. So we, we did what they said and we feel like there is consensus there. Obviously, we can't know for sure until they vote, but we're very confident that, that we did address their concerns and we're grateful to them for their, their flexibility on that. So, thank you.
So from, from our standpoint, we don't have a, a blessed plan per se. So, I mean, that's, that's one.
Waiting.
One item that quite frankly, maybe waiting is maybe the better part of our, and then we can get every, all our plans done, but correctly, because they're, they're the ones that set that. The second item that was, there was feedbacks from the Parks and Rec Commission on screening of the parcel to the west and future town land.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that discussion as well?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Since the last meeting, we, we had occasion to speak with the chairman of Parks and Rec and, and also had some conversations with the 26.2 Foundation informally and such. We are, and I spoke with the chairman about this, fully committed to enhancing the screening on, from the pond all the way southward, including the western bank of that pond, and increasing the height of that screening to 15 feet and trying to manage that within the 15 to 20 foot height range. In addition, we proposed an allowance of $15,000 to the Parks and Rec to cover future screening of whatever buildings and or Marathon Center may be built on the Parks and Rec site. And we are, you know, actively and sincerely planning to work closely with the Parks and Rec Commission, 26.2 Foundation in concert to be a good partner and, and help them in other ways as well, which, you know, isn't necessarily part of the playing board purview, but we want to be a participant and a partner in whatever happens on that site and help support that. So we want to be a good neighbor, a good partner. We are actively working with both organizations and we're very confident that that will come together. And just, we had very positive feedback from, from the folks we spoke to late last week.
Mr. Sonnet from Parks and Rec.
The, I don't know anything about your meeting with the chairman. Parks and Rec had a meeting last Tuesday where we discussed this very much in depth. And we came up with two motions and prepared a letter to the planning board, which tells our position. Let me just read parts of it to you. It's a letter to Ken Weisman, the chairman. As I understand, it's been distributed to all the members of the planning board. It says, "The Hawketon Parks and Recreation Commission met on Tuesday, July 21st. The agenda included a discussion relative to solar farm proposed for the property of budding, which is currently part of Legacy Farms, which will be transferred to the town of Hawketon. Once transferred, the Parks and Rec Commission will manage the development of that parcel. The commissioners debated over the subject following the discussion that was moved and seconded, and that was, that vote was unanimous. The vote not to support was primarily based on what appears to be the non-adherence to the zoning bylaws specific, zoning bylaw, chapter 201, article 31, to solar photovoltaic installations. The commissioners do not believe that the current proposal meets those standards articulated in that bylaw. The commission also requests the town council review all related bylaws relative to solar farm placement before the public hearing on this matter is closed. It is the opinion of the commission." It is the opinion of the commission that any hearing in regards to this project be delayed until such a review has been completed. In their deliberations, the commissioners expressed concern that the project would have a negative economic impact on the abutting town property. The land next to it proposed solar farm is designated for Parks and Rec use. It is the opinion of the commission that the aesthetics of such an expansive solar farm would significantly lower the property value of the land designated town ownership. This would result in a negative economic impact in both the short and long term. In addition, the 2015 annual Hawcinton Town Meeting voted to determine how to set standards for the proposed intent and application of commercial solar photovoltaic installations. That study is critical in determining whether the proposed project complies with the specific zoning bylaw. It is important to make clear that the Parks and Rec Commission vote does not support this specific project as proposed. This was not a vote against solar energy in general. However, it is vital that every step is taken to ensure that the best possible use for the land soon to be owned by the town of Hawcinton be achieved, respectively, Parks and Rec Commission." Mr. Chairman, the bottom line here is that there are two things that we think are in play. One is a devaluation of town property because of the solar farm, and two, doesn't really meet our bylaw, our bylaw. Therefore, we ask, we're asking for a town council review, and the other thing in this. So, I would ask that you continue this hearing until those things can be addressed. And as the gentleman said, he's had a discussion with the Parks and Rec chairman. It certainly hasn't been discussed with its members, and there's no assumption that it would be as warmly endorsed as you say our chairman is, so.
I guess, maybe where I would like to direct both of you guys is, one, to try to get, come together on the screening issues, potentially, you know, that's, that's the mitigation this board can enforce. You know, is the 15 feet the right amount? Is the placement in the right amount, et cetera? And I'll get back to the placement in just a second. I think the 15 feet were better than the, I'm trying to say the eight feet that we heard before. I kinda worry, when you're looking up the hill, whether 15 feet is the right number or not. You know, from, from a, you know, an absolute screening, I'm, I'm not sure. But you also have that study that Mr. McDowell did for his screening, which kinda shows a certain, that was looking, looking at the screening from the top down and how many feet he needed. And fortunately, his was on the north side, so the height of the trees didn't, didn't bother as much as, obviously, you've got some constraints of, of trees, but what the Conservation Commission did helps allow longer, taller trees, too, because they moved you back away from that area a little bit. You know, I mean, so the shadow effect is obviously not nearly as bad as it would have been if they were keeping you in the wet, the wetland area. So, I, number one, I think Parks and Rec needs to look at the screening and looks at, needs to know whether the $15,000 as a contingency of trees needed in the future for screening of, I'll say, high-value vistas, I guess, or something like, I don't know how you, you kinda put that. Is that the right number? And if you guys can come together with a, whatever the right number is without us, that makes us feel a lot better that the neighbor is in that condition. Four members are kinda supportive of that kind of approach?
That addresses one element, but I think there's other elements that the representative of Parks and Rec brought up that I think also should be vetted.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's been anything done since then, but I mean, I thought he brought out a couple of good points that I think I'd like to get addressed.
Okay.
And I think in terms of the coverage, I think it's not only the height, but it's the depth, if you're gonna look at the coverage. So, it's not just a row that goes up 15 feet, but if you look at the other abutters, they have height, but they also have depth to be able to kind of insulate themselves from what they're looking at. But I think it goes, I'd rather address, or have those issues addressed that he brought up before we, before we move forward here.
Okay. Now, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would agree with what Fran just said, as far as not just the height. I think the height going to 15 feet and maintained at 15 to 20 feet, or managed at 15 to 20 feet range, is definitely better than eight, but the depth is equally as important. You know, I know you spoke with the chairman or were in contact, whether it's, you know, personally, by, by phone, by email?
By phone.
With the chairman, but he's clearly not conveyed any of that information yet to the rest of Parks and Rec, as the representative of Parks and Rec was unaware of this.
I, I, I agree. We, we had a conversation on the phone after this letter came about, and unfortunately, we weren't invited or notified about the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and, and I was made aware that some members of the commission weren't even aware that we had walked the site with the chairman and the representative from the 26.2 Foundation and showed the photos. We did share the photos of the screen view and the pre-screened view, which shows that it would be, you know, nearly impossible, if not impossible, to see any of the solar panels from the site and propose the additional screening of a future building wherever that may be built on the site. At this point, our understanding is that it's not known. It's still a work in progress. So, what we thought would be most positive would be to become a partner in, in that project to help them advance their goals and support a really important town initiative. So, what's, what's also, I think people have to recognize, that we have a short window here where we can get this done. If you want to delay this indefinitely and study your own bylaw and other things that I think are fairly clearly written, in our opinion, and we know what they say, we, we're just very concerned. There's a construction window that we have to meet this year to, to fall in with our financing and meeting incentives, and it's already sort of carried on a little bit further than we had expected, but we, we really need to get to a decision either tonight or by your next meeting at the latest, if this project's gonna happen. And we want it to happen, and we want to be a good neighbor and a good contributor to, to what's gonna happen next door. And so, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that we meet with the right people and work with them to get that to happen. And we are absolutely willing to, and we'd love to meet with that Parks and Rec Commission. And I think the chairman said they might be willing to even schedule a special meeting in between this meeting and your next meeting.
The other thing that I did want to add is, I would also like to hear what CONCOM has to, their, their final outcome. I'd like to hear their final outcome before we make any kind of a decision here. So, I mean, I would like to, you know, hold off until that, that does come.
And that should be Monday next week.
Okay. Let's, let me go to the details of that screening. I mean, this map shows it pretty well. My question would be, why is this a gap here? When you're, it appears you look right in at, at that bottom set of panels at that point.
There is, there is, there are actually a lot of trees over here, too, that are in existence. We're, we're happy to extend that further down.
Where's the property line there?
Our lease line is over here.
Where's, where's Mr. Mezzet's?
It's approximately.
Here, I can.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean. That's kinda where the easement line is.
Yeah, our lease area, I believe, is this dash.
And this, and this black line is property line.
It kinda cuts at an angle now.
It just seems to me like I can look right in.
Yeah.
As soon as I cross and look right up into the, into the panels.
We could absolutely extend that line further down of, of screen.
Figure out a way to bring it down. I, I, that, that was one that just seemed like a, even for a layman, that was an obvious gap.
And we could add, you know, zigzagged trees to thicken it up as well, similar to what's done further north.
Right.
So that you get a sort of thicker hedgerow, more dense hedgerow.
I mean, my, my view, I want to see as little as possible, but if there was a glimpse, I'm not sure I'm, it's that bad, but I don't want to see two acres of it. You know, but that's, I don't.
I just want to add that this is not a site plan, a special permit, so you can condition it with additional screening being added. It does not have to be a final plan.
Right. Well, it's a lot easier, though, if, if it's on the plan, and, you know, if we're to the point where we're gonna wait for CONCOM, you know, and I want to give you the, you know, build it like this, you know, I mean, because we all understand that.
Oh, sure. And if, assuming that Parks and Rec is able to schedule a meeting in between now and your next meeting, we should be able to come to some consensus and hope with that.
Now, going back to the second half of Parks and Rec, one is the screening, and, and, you know, and, and whether the amount of the 15,000, I don't, you know, this 15,000, what are we, what are we doing for even trees and bushes?
Well, if I could clarify something, the, the shrubs that we're showing are not part of the 15,000. Those are already a project cost.
Sure.
The 15,000 was an earmark or a commitment to Parks and Rec to add additional taller trees in between the future building and the solar, so that they can screen that view from a second floor, let's say, of the Marathon Center or whatever building Parks and Rec is, you know, allowing or building on that parcel. So, it's, it's sort of adaptive for them. When they get to the point of citing that building, they would have a landscape budget to provide additional screening where it's, where it's most appropriate. So, that, that was the idea. You can buy a lot of big trees for, and plant them for $15,000, and that was the thinking. We just, we kinda thought, okay, this is a fair budget.
That's what I don't have a good handle on, is how much, how many big trees can I buy for 15,000?
You do a good job.
One good one.
What?
One good one.
Can I hear what Roy has to say, because I know he's purchasing trees.
You very simply could have the mezzes price on some trees for you. We have, we all, in the industry, we all have wholesale catalogs for various types of trees. You know, they're gonna be using coniferous trees, so they very easily can get your old silver racing trees, and that's pretty easy.
Tell me kinda what maybe is an action item for the next time. Tell me, tell me, tell me what.
Roger could pull that to the table.
What $15,000 is, is, is that something that I'm, you know, that I should be really excited about? Or is it just kind of?
Are we talking one or two, or are we talking about a dozen or so?
$15,000 in my front yard would be one difference. This is over 300, 400 feet. I don't know. I, I just don't have a good feel on.
The cemetery just put in three new sugar maples. It cost about 1,500 to 2,000 with the three sugar maples. So, might not buy you too many. Anyway.
Whatever. I, let's hope the commission, Parks and Rec Commission, can, you guys can kinda sort that out.
We'll work with them on that, on that budget and come up with something appropriate.
Now, for, for the other details of whether it meets the bylaw, I think that's what most of us get paid for. And I say that jokingly. However, it might be worthwhile if we have a set of terms and conditions that we propose for the next meeting, that in the next meeting, we have Ray look at those terms and conditions, as the Attorney General kinda said in her guidance at the time, for having town council look at what we might impose. But part of that is, is if the applicant is willing to accept the terms and conditions that are being imposed, you know, then it doesn't go much further than that. I mean, you're off building and you're happy. So, but having town council look at terms and conditions, it might make sense to me whether or not, I think we went through the whole list of the bylaws last time, setbacks, and we went through all the pieces. There was a couple of subjective ones, such as screening, that we hadn't got there, but everything else, I think we thought had determined as a committee that we met the criteria. I don't know whether Fran, that helps in your concerns or not.
Yeah, I might have to, I'd have to go back to look at, is it Chapter 201, Article 31? That's the one that's specifically referenced.
I think that's for screening. I do have it if you, you'd like me to.
Go ahead.
I tasted, I tasted the standards in the memo.
On page, page three, right? Yeah.
Right, so, 210, 202 lists what the plan has to go forward to.
And it's Item E that we're still really, we're still talking really about Item E, which is screening, and then utilities underground, we talked a lot about the last time. But everything else was, we have a standard that not detrimental with the neighborhood or the town.
So, it's this board that makes those findings, but town council won't tell you.
Right. Town council's not gonna tell us that. That's what, what we get paid for.
And I presume the town council reviewed the bylaw when it was brought up at the meeting?
Absolutely.
That part.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
With all due respect, the Parks and Rec was very specific, asking for a town council analysis of the bylaw, because we've heard that the bylaw doesn't hold water with current state law. And we find that something we don't understand. We're pretty, we're very adamant about having town council review it. I don't understand why they're reluctant. Why don't they take a look at it?
Well, first of all, the town council has reviewed it, when, when he approved it just a year and a half ago.
Didn't we get a letter from the Attorney General saying that it was?
Yes, and the Attorney General said that it's good, however.
And I pay the cautions that.
And that's in the memo, too.
Not to apply strictly.
It's good, however, that doesn't make sense. The town voted on a bylaw, it's either good or innocent. We would like to know whether it's any good or not.
It's good.
It's good. What they cautioned us on is, don't go crazy on special conditions. And don't deny it.
That's our request.
Okay.
There's a, because there's a, solar energy is one of the, one of the exempt uses in the state statute of zoning. So, just like childcare, education, agriculture, there are limits on what you can do, saying no.
So, can I ask about Item E? As far as the utility connections being underground? What, where do we stand?
We, there is a draft in your memo that we're, we're okay with.
Well, I wanna, you're segmenting really nicely to the next segment. If you pull out your plan that you submitted, you revised one page. It's the one that detailed out that connection.
It's probably 3.3. For, for.
C, C43. Okay, when I looked at this plan, what I saw was across the roadway, OHW, which I thought we talked about that being underground, so that's not overhead wires.
Actually, what we, I think we missed that. You'll, you'll note there's a. There, you'll, you'll note, there's a, there's a new note just north of that on the plan.
Yep, yep.
And the note was intended to be consistent with the, the condition that is in Elaine's memo, which is basically that if we go underground unless there was some feasibility issue discovered by ever source, and then it would go back to the planning board.
It looks to me, it looks to me like you've got the two pad mount switchgear, which takes the place of all those two rows of poles that I found really objectionable.
Yeah, that's just an oversight of drafting error. We had removed the poles, and the intent was to try and reflect that Elaine's condition.
Okay, and, and I wouldn't mind if, if that one dot that's in the middle there represents the guide wire pole.
Okay.
You, if you put something, existing pole for guide wire in your drafting of that, I, I just don't want you to get thinking that we're looking at going underground, or we're not going underground across the road.
No, we, we understood the, the Board's comments last time. I think it was really an oversight. I didn't, I really didn't see the OHW until you mentioned it.
And, and I think it, I think it looks potentially a lot better the way that it's done, and, you know, it's, I mean, the guide wire one, one being existing, but the 15-foot rule doesn't exist on guide wires. They allow whatever vegetation is to, that's why you probably don't see it out today. So, you know.
No, we're, we're okay with the condition as written.
Okay.
And we can change that part of the plan to reflect your comments.
Change the plan a little bit. Brian, does that take care of your concern on that one?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the other kind of drafting concern, I'll bring that up now. I still don't see where you've got in your fence detail, how you attach the top wire to the poles.
So, and this is something.
C 51.
Yeah, that we actually contacted a fence company again to make sure that it was addressed appropriately, and we did relay the comment of creating or attaching, kind of with brackets, at each pole, the tension wire.
Yep.
And the comments that were given back to us, which do make sense to me, are, one that it's overkill, you know, in terms of if, if the fence is constructed to what this detail shows, in terms of the poles being sufficiently embedded, and the tensioning being done properly, this bracing at points where the corner, where the fence, you know, connects at an angle, that that is sufficient and shouldn't have any issues. I know on some of our other projects where we have had fence issues, it's been because, for example, the poles aren't embedded enough, or some other construction issue. In terms of connecting with a bracket at each pole, the issue with that is that it creates multiple points for failure, essentially. So rather than having one point on either end that are connected appropriately and tensioned appropriately, you end up at each of the poles if one of those fails. You know, however many poles you have along that length, instead of two potential locations for failure, you have 17, or however many poles are along that length. So, we did take your comment and reach out to a fence company, we did update this detail a bit based on their input in terms of how it should be constructed, namely this cross brace. We're happy to add an additional note or, or addition that the fence speaks.
My, my concern was.
At either pole, yeah, it gets tensioned.
It was right here.
Yeah, I didn't get a good look at this, I was trying to figure out what happened.
And, and they have a, you're, you're close to a corner on your right hand piece there, and, and so they kind of had something to brace those two poles.
So they don't have it at an angle.
And it still fell.
I think what we've got added is these clamps that actually clamp the fence.
No?
No, not it, that's what we were speaking about, what the fence company was saying. One, it's overkill, but two, they're actually concerned about that being more likely to fail.
Now, now, to me, and I'm not the fence guy, if you had a cap that had the hole where the rail used to go, and you put the wire through that, then I know it won't fall vertically.
In terms of basically stringing the tension wire through the poles. Yeah, and that can be done, but it's not a bracket at each pole.
Okay, then it's a, then it's a, it's something to keep it from falling, that's, because that's obviously what we're finding here.
Yeah, we're, we're, this isn't a controversial issue.
Right.
I know it isn't, I just want to detail so that it will work. I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I don't have a lot of experience about fences, but I guess this is one that goes into my repertoire.
We will update the plan to reflect that.
Detention, stringing through holes in the poles, yeah, which is kind of incorporated in that, but we'll clarify that.
I mean, I noticed the other thing where you're clipping it to the pole line, but you're going to have some pretty long fence lines still.
Yeah, you're right.
I can see where every couple hundred feet, you might want to do something, but that's up to you.
We want the fence to stay up.
You want to, okay. You don't want to care, but, okay.
Yeah, I actually, just as an aside, had about seven conversations with, internally, and then following up with the fence person, because I knew this was an issue, and really pushed our engineer to make sure that what we're showing is going to function, because I know it's a concern.
At the end of the day, you want your fence to hold up.
Right.
Okay, so I think we're stuck, same, the same, like, two issues or whatever, the three issues, two last issues. I mean, we've got a little check, like, check the last of the drawings on the last two, which won't be taken to hoop, but it's really feedback from Concom and, and Parks and Rec. Go ahead, Claire.
Oh, thank you. No, no, please. I want to bring up another issue, so.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to piggyback on something that Parks and Rec brought up, and I think you mentioned it as well, about the 26.2 or the Marathon Center. I know that Tim, last time, showed a couple drawings, he's down here today, but I'd be curious in terms of the type of conversation that you had with him, if there's anything else that you could add to, in terms of how they position on.
Well, it's in such an embryo stage that we haven't, you know, we've seen the same things that you have.
Yeah.
But as far as having a substantive discussion, we haven't done it. 26.2 has, has a great vision for that. How close it is to being reality, I have no idea. But, you know, if it could be combined with some other properties to the north, whatever, we could really turn that area into a real asset.
I agree with you 100%, 100%.
I could, I could add to that too. Our, I mean, our primary focus is really to make sure that Parks and Rec is comfortable with what we're doing, and has adequate screening pay, and that we also support in, in, we'll, there'll be a contribution toward what they're doing. And in addition to that, we want, we do want to be a partner in what 26.2 is doing, Marathon Center, so we are, we are in conversations with them. I think that's outside the purview of this group, and outside the purview of Parks and Rec per se, but there is some inner relationship there that we're aware of, and we're just trying to navigate that, that a little bit, to make sure we satisfy what's going to happen on that parcel of land, and, and that whatever we contribute toward that is used the way that Parks and Rec wants, and that is best, most beneficial to the town. But that's in addition to just sort of screening our site under the zoning, which we fully intend to do. This is sort of an additional, our, our partnership and contribution to, to the town, and it's better than the Parks and Rec department's work, so, but we're, we're committed to that. We, we want to be here, we're long-term, we want to be a good neighbor, and we want to work with Parks and Rec, that's, that's our commitment.
Other concerns, questions from members of the board? Claire?
Yeah, I reviewed the tape from last session, and as, as I understood it, at that point, the board was looking at the decommissioning agreement, but not a performance bond, largely because of the difficulties of having to go to the general fund and then appropriate it. Is that correct with the board?
Yes.
That's what it looked like?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I want to stay, I am very uncomfortable with the town not having a performance bond in hand that they can access, even if the mechanism is cumbersome. If you want to have a decommissioning agreement as well, that's fine, but a lot can happen in 20 years or less, and I don't want to see us get into a situation where agreement be done, the thing is sitting there, it's deteriorating, it's gone dead, the company's long gone, the group, solar, which was the great new thing now, is now a thing of the past, and we've got these rusting things sitting out there, and we can't get the company because they're gone to remove them at a certain point. You know, I know we all have great, great plans for solar, but, you know, I've seen so many projects where we couldn't get in touch with the developer, Elaine or whoever is sending him letters for nine, 10 months, we get no answer. You know, I'll bet you my beta recorder and a case of floppy disks that 20 years from now, we might want to get rid of this thing. And I am not comfortable with the town not having access to funds so that we can take it out. I don't want it to be stuck holding the bag.
If I could address that, I appreciate your comment very much. We, it's not that there's no, no commitment to remove it, we have a legally binding lease with the landowner that has us putting a, a solid surety bond to, you know, to the landowner, and, and if we don't remove, if that project is over and we don't remove the equipment, the landowner has direct access to those funds to, to remove it, and he has no interest in, you know, keeping their, if he has no interest in keeping it operating.
I, I understand there are all these great mechanisms put in place, this party will do it, and that party will do it, and 20 years from now, suppose, I don't wish you any harm, but suppose your company is gone, and the landowner has moved along, and it's held by I don't know who, and we've got these different parties, the town is saying, get rid of these things, get rid of these things, and they don't do anything. And at a certain point, we're stuck looking at this thing, we can't legally go in and take it because it's under somebody else's control, who we can't contact, they live in Florida or whatever. I've seen this so many times with this board, with different developments, where we had a hard time raising the developer to get some action. It goes on for weeks and months and years, and if the whole agreement works as it's supposed to, that's great. That's what we want, we don't want to have to do this. But if it doesn't, the best laid plans of mice and men, I want our town protected so that we don't get stuck holding the bag. We have access to some kind of funds that if we have to do it, we can go in and do it. And it may be cumbersome, but I personally will not agree with this unless the town is protected by funds that we can access to do it ourselves if worse comes to worse.
Maybe Elaine, that's one of the, particularly the conditions that Ray need, could opine on. I mean, you know, because that, we do have it written as a condition, obviously Claire feels that it might not be strong enough, but maybe Ray can help us in that over the, over the.
Yeah, non-agreement on bonds. It says right in, you know, we're kind of hand, hand-strung on a lot of this, our hands are tied, the state is saying you have to approve these things, blah, 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 anywhere, anytime. One of the things it does allow us is to collect a performance bond. We are allowed to do that. So I just think we should protect ourselves to the fullest extent possible. If you don't use it, then that's great.
Let's, let's have Ray opine on all the conditions, particularly that one. Okay? Other questions, comments? Anyone else, members, public? Okay, we have a bunch of action items. What time's available on the 10th?
Well, we don't have time to sign to anything there yet.
Okay.
We have a couple of items, we don't have time.
So we could do it at 7:30?
Do you expect to have a forum at that moment?
I would say that, except I won't be here.
You won't be here? Oh, great. We'll have COVID day. Okay. I think, I think it's clear where we're, which way we're headed and what we have to do. There's no questions, I don't think, on the stormwater open at this point. I'm just going to make sure that we're not losing this opportunity to act, to do anything else. Consultant said that everything was fine with that. Okay, so I guess we're ready for a motion to continue the public hearing on both of these permits to 7:30 on August 10th, 2015.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained, motion carries?
An extension of time to the stormwater management permit to file a decision. At the end of the week, August 15th.
Okay, and the motion would be to, is that to request or to?
Actually, if you wanted to accept the proposal, I'll be back.
What?
I'm just looking at my vacation schedule, so if you grant an extension of time to file a decision to August 21st.
August 21st? And is that just a motion from us?
Yes.
A motion to extend the time to August 21st?
Moved and seconded.
Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained, motion carries? And what else, is there anything else we need to do? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you on the 10th. Thanks for your time. We do appreciate your comments.
Okay, I think next up on the gist is Mr. Pine, Christian Estates.
I think we've got two or three minor things to do here. The first one is to set a performance guarantee amount for the remaining work, and we heard from our engineer today, I think, of $54,421. Is that, are you aware of all of what's been going on the rest of the day?
Last week, Joe Markland brought me his version of items left to be done and a value beside them. At that time, including a 20% contingency, he had $49,621. I did not see what Luckner did.
The only change is to give out more detention bonds. The detention bond, where Markland had $3,000, Luckner popped that up to $7,000. That's the only change.
Okay, the issue, and I, I had reached out to Luckner on Friday, just left the message on his phone, because I didn't get him, and asked if it was possible for him to come by today, because I expected to accomplish several of these items, which in fact I did. The side, side grading and the side slope is completed, the detention bonds are completed, the loom and seating is completed, except for one short strap. One of three check dams is completed, the stone trench is completed, the driveway is paved by the tennis court, it needs an as-built plan, iron pins, legal description. So, apparently he didn't see all of that, but it, it is completed. I took some pictures tonight to see if they'd be of any help, but.
Jim, I think we can set what he recommends tonight, and in the next meeting, we can reduce everything that he says that's done. I mean, you know, typically it's been, I think, the policy of the board, just to look at the, get the inspector's input before we go further. But we can reduce it right away or wait.
I mean, that's fine, but what did his report show today?
Just the one change. So he had taken Markland's list and circled the detention bond, and then crossed up the number and put it at $7,000. That was it. He tried to send a report with photographs, but I couldn't open it yet. He should want his, so, get that.
All right. And one of my issues is because I did this as an individual, not a company.
I understand.
Bonding is not really possible, and it's something I've been just working on, but I'm, it's necessary that I get at least one of the three lots, you know, released, because they're anxious to get building.
Which, which lot do you need to get released?
Well, it's the last one, the biggest one. I think it's 3C is the way they've identified it. It's a, it's a, no, I'm sorry, 2C. It's about an 11-acre lot. It's the one that goes at the very end.
So Jim, that was on the form page. You need to write in the last rate one of these. That blank at the very end of the sentence.
Elaine, if, if we release this lot and go with the amount, can we also make it to be automatically reduced if the, if our consulting engineer Luckner comes out and looks at and knocks them off?
Yeah, you could say that between now and you need to be working on a timeframe, if the inspector goes out there and lets pass inspection, then it's automatically reduced by the amount shown on that list.
For line item, which then will allow you to, all those that you said you got done, as long as he says it, will reduce it automatically. How about that?
To a certain point, you don't want to get over zero without coming back to the board.
No, but all the items that, yeah.
Put the review at your next meeting to see what the total is.
So entertain a motion to set the release at 54, 240.
421.
421, subject to review of line items by the inspecting engineer, which could reduce that amount.
According.
According.
It's automatically reduced.
Yep.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Need further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained, motion carries. Okay, then the next one would be to vote to release the lots pending receipt of whatever is left on the performance bond. And this would be for lot 2C.
Just the one lot?
You want one lot or you want two lots? You want them all?
No.
No?
As you know, it's a.
Oh, you start paying taxes at that point.
No, it's a three-lot subdivision. I have two family members that would like to get underway, one a little quicker than the other.
Okay.
And even that, this isn't.
Okay, so the request is for lot 2C. And this is to what, to sign the lot release and vote? Looking for a motion to sign the lot release for 2C.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained, motion carries. Okay, we're going to sign that, I think, is you going to pass that around?
Yep, and we'll pass it around, then I'll notify us if we can pick it up tomorrow, or actually pick it up once we receive the funds.
Once you receive the funds.
We'll have it all, you can be honest. It could be a surety.
You've got a lot of stuff that, you know, get your engineer out there to make it down to a smaller number.
I got to get Luckner out here.
Yeah.
It's done.
I understand. I mean.
I know he was there today, but I don't know how you can miss the paved road.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See ya. Okay, I think we're now at Hayden Woods, Davenport Village.
How you doing?
Hi. So we're up here for signage and performance bond. Okay. Now, for the performance bond, the number I got with the 20% that we're supposed to do there would be 284,880, which is Betas.
Latest.
They had, had 15% and our policy is 20%. So provided my calculator did the math correctly, it's 284,880. So if you're.
Now, did you also vote to release the last pendant that receipt?
Well, there's no lots. It's kind of a new.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we don't, okay, so it's just, okay.
Okay, so.
Well, the board will, will send a letter to the building inspector once the funds received, saying it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so basically, looking for a motion to set the performance guarantee amount at
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the discussion. Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained, motion carries. Okay, so that's the easy one. Now we're talking time.
Okay.
Why don't you present your request?
Do you have those pictures?
I don't have them electronic.
I think we had them. We have pictures right here. We have pictures.
I guess, what would you like to discuss first, a temporary sign or the sign?
Let's go with the temporary sign. That's the easier one, I guess. Okay. Elaine, where are we on the temporary sign?
It's totally a question.
Because?
Because the garden department bylaws says all signs are projected plenty of work. It's exempted as a sign by law.
So, so basically, the fact that it is bigger than a real estate sign that would be in an RV district does not matter?
Well, it's something that you may want to think about, but it is typical for marketing signs for developments to be larger than, than a regular wheelchair sign for a home or so.
Does anyone have comments on that? Has anyone drove by and found it exceptionally ugly or not? I thought it kind of looked kind of nice.
All right.
It's all right.
No issues.
Same here. I don't have any issues with the sign.
Okay. Temporary sign, looks like we're going to have a consensus that when we vote signs, well, that one, that one works.
Okay.
Take the easy ones first.
Thank you.
Now, what about the sign you didn't ask for, for the financing of the property?
Is there a temporary sign out there?
Oh, oh, okay. Is that something you need?
Well, they'd like to have it there, but.
If that sign, does that meet our sign bylaw for the bylaws of somebody working on a site?
We can measure it, but it's one of the smaller things.
If it.
What do you, the six square feet? Yeah, I would say that's probably right in the realm of that.
If, if it meets, if it meets the normal sign bylaw for somebody doing construction work on a site, I don't see where we would single that out. I mean.
I agree.
Okay? And that, that would be more under the sign bylaw as opposed to something we're doing here tonight? Is that?
Well, everything is.
I guess everything is?
Subject to error.
Okay, so we, okay, so I guess we got to do that one too. Okay. Now, let's go to the ones in car and stone. First of all, was the, was the rock wall on the original plan, the little wings?
Yes.
So we had, we were supposed to get the wings.
Yes.
So the walls are constructed.
And we have that state, we have that state by Markland for the exact length and so forth.
Nice wall. The question is.
Beautiful.
Yes. The question is, the name versus the street name versus, Elaine, can you kind of go through some of our past deliberations on this for the new board members?
Well, I guess the longstanding concern is twofold, that development names are not often a street name, and then when people move in, they might identify with development names. So when they call for emergency services, they're saying, I live in Davenport, and emergencies first of all won't know where Davenport is because the street name is Buckland Street. So I think that's the first concern, so that the town has always been concerned about different names from that perspective. In the other perspective, the board hasn't wanted developments like this to turn into private enclaves. It's a condominium project, so it's a little bit like that, but in Legacy Farms, the town was pretty clear, for example, that it wanted to be integrated into the town and not to be a separate enclave. You know, the board's never wanted gated communities and those kinds of things. So try to make it part of the town and less like a private enclave. There's always been the past concern, a couple of things like that. In this case, it has Davenport as the wall, but it doesn't mean anything. I guess the street name is Buckland Street. The development name is Hayden Woods, although it's been renamed, but that name will never appear anywhere. And when, for example, someone comes to town hall to say, I'd like to see the plans for Davenport Village, no one will be able to find them. We've come to that a few times over the years. With Toll Brothers, for example, we named their subdivision as totally different than the subdivision plan, so people coming in to look for that, we happen to know what the name is to Buckland, but.
Well, not that it matters to you, but we have been marketing it as Davenport Village at Hayden Woods, so.
Well, there's nothing to say that you can't continue to market it as Davenport Village. I think that's what's in your marketing sign, but there's been a longstanding policy, and as Elaine just explained, there's some very good reasons for it. And I do understand that you took over the development from the Hayden Woods, got its approval, so you weren't, you know, you know, fairness, you weren't party to the discussions, and it was probably an honest mistake. But having said that, you know, we run the risk of do what you want and ask questions later. Once it's already done, you know, we'll just let it go. And then the next one comes along, the next one. We have, for a long time, consistently maintained that developments should not be named. And we have here a 940-unit housing development. Actually, it's now more than 940, over 1,000 at Legacy that are willing to not have names for their, their development. And, and you know, I just, I just feel that we should, we should uphold what we've been upholding, there are good reasons for it, and I think it should come out.
I think if you're going to leave, if you're going to leave a sign in there, it should say Buckland, it should be the name of the street. Otherwise, it should not be named.
That you could do.
Chuck?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused because when we were asked to come in with names for the development, we came in with a written request that said Davenport Village, named after Mary Davenport, a white former governor of Massachusetts, and we came in with Buckland Lane as the street name. We came in and presented those to this board. And while I agree, and I understand the logic of what's being said, Springwood Circus 1700, Legacy Farms, there are developments all over town that have development names. So it's, you can say what you want, but people do identify themselves coming from a particular development for fire protection services. There's only a street sign out there that says Buckland Lane. So I respectfully would submit that we were in front of you in writing with this in both names when these gentlemen took over Hayden Woods, and we said we were going to rename this, and we gave the history as to how we were going to do that. So it's a little confusing to me right now as to how this is coming, coming into play. Obviously, it's at the discretion of the board.
But at, but at the same time, we didn't approve stone wall that had a street name in it or a name in it either, at the same time, either. You didn't, you didn't ask us about that. I mean.
That always raises red flags, both designers, you saw this in this board, we ask about signage, and, you know, I can be pretty darn certain that if it had been said, we're going to name it Davenport, and it's going to be in the stone wall, that would have been a point of discussion, and it wasn't because it was never, it was never brought up. And, you know, legacy people have assured us that once a development is built out, all those marketing signs are going to come down, and what's going to be up there are the street signs. It's not going to have an entity that says Legacy Farms, and, you know, this, this was not approved.
Where are people?
Can we seek approval?
Well, it's kind of what you are at this point.
Well, I don't know if you have to have a formal submission of.
Well, I would say that this is more in the administrative mode, I think, as opposed to having to have a public hearing on it. But where, where do people? The real question is, does the etched in stone come out of the stone or not? I mean, that's what we're talking about. I know where Claire's at.
The next guy is going to come and just do it. Just going to do it. The easiest thing in this town is just do it and ask questions later, and the board will let it go because.
Well, that wasn't our intent.
No, but that's, that's the way it will, it will go further down. It'll, it'll be a precedent.
I put subdivisions in many a towns, and we do that all the time.
Who wants to?
I wouldn't have an objection with the street name, but I think it does add to confusion. I think a development name and a separate sign on a street name, I have a problem.
Okay, so there's.
I don't have the history that other members of the board have with this issue, but I can't say that it's one of the things that would trouble me the most, so I.
I made my comment. I mean, like I said, you know, either, I would like to either see it be changed to the name of the street Buckland or, or be removed, just for clarity's point.
Is there precedent here? Right, because I know that Claire brought up Legacy, but to Chuck's point, there are a number of.
And, and a lot of those were the early 90s developments, and at that point, some of the problems starting to get there, and then I think the board, now, I don't go back quite that far.
Well, I go back 15 years, and we have not been permitting developments to have permanent names because we started to have Ravenwood and some others, and so we don't like that. And we have been consistent about denying development names on permanent signage for 15 years.
I remember one of my younger kids came in and said, well, the people in that neighborhood don't play with us.
Valley women.
What about the fact that it's a private way, it's not a public way?
It's a, it's a part of Hafnch.
I, I think Claire's points are salient. I mean, I know there's some history here and pointed out, but I think over the past fifteen years, if we haven't been doing it, I would be consistent with that process.
Matt, do you?
I mean, I don't take that much exception with it, to be honest with you. I mean, it doesn't say Davenport Village, it just says Davenport. So to me, you know, I, I guess I'm just not as picky about that.
To me, that's where the confusion is, because Davenport, somebody could think that that's Davenport Road, Davenport Lane, Davenport whatever.
Yeah.
That's where the confusion is. If it said Davenport Village, then you're naming the development?
Yeah, clearly, you know, emergency 911, you know.
They always ask for the address. Somebody's going to give.
And if it's a landline, they already know where they're calling from. So it's, to me, you know, I get what you're saying. It sort of, you know, doesn't line up with what we would ideally want, but I think the E-911 thing is, you know, a little misstated.
I think I'm hearing a consensus not to approve the etched in stone. I think that's kind of the way.
Were you saying that on two or not?
Well, let's, Claire, since you're, I think, on the majority side, why don't you propose a motion about the, the etched stone?
Okay, I move that the Davenport signage be removed.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Move the second. Further discussion? We've talked about enough.
What if, what if people would want to, they could say Buckland?
That's my next.
He may not.
My next question. If you're denying this.
It would have to say street. If the development's not named Buckland.
Buckland Lane.
Whatever it's called. I mean, you couldn't just say Buckland.
Buckland Lane.
If you wanted to use it as a street sign, I guess you could.
Well, if you want to take a vote on this one, we have a, we have a motion in front of us, so let's, let's, let's take a motion, and then, then we'll have another.
We think that it adds to the wall having signage in it, so we'd like to.
Well, I mean, if you decided to put Buckland Street instead.
Elaine.
Lane, whatever it is, rather than just Buckland, you'd have to take the Davenport thing out anyway. Would you be smoothing it out and then re-carving it?
Oh, we'd have to replace it.
So if you have to replace it, then it's pulling away anyway. Letting them say Buckland doesn't help them any. Plus, if it said Buckland, I think you would still.
Plus, if it said Buckland, I think you would still need a regular, you'd still need a regular street sign.
Yes, we're not...
Yeah, we're not looking to put that to replace the street sign.
You know...
We just think it adds to it, rather than just a plain stone wall. I think it adds a little color to it. It's a little class to it.
It'll be nice.
But to vote on it, it seems that some people aren't against it. What does the vote have to be? Majority of...
Why don't we just take a vote on the removal?
We have a motion in front of us for the removal.
Move and second it.
All those in favor of removing the sign say aye.
Aye.
So put one's hands up, I guess. One, two. Okay. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, two nays. Anyone abstaining? I guess not. So motion passed. Now, if you would like us to go approve Buckland, Lane would be happy to make that motion. It's up to you, or...
Now, we have to put Buckland Lane in each one, or could we go Buckland Lane?
That would be weird.
Well, I think that would be weird.
Yeah, it would be very weird.
I mean, so it'd be, entertain a motion to replace the writing with Buckland Lane. Davenport...
If wished.
If he wished.
If desired.
It's up to you.
They might wanna rethink this.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. It says here on page 10, it says Buckland Street.
It does say Buckland Street on page 10.
It's Buckland Lane. Yeah, it's Buckland Lane. Okay.
We also have a Buckland Street.
Oh, we do?
Well, it doesn't exist, but it's on all the maps. It's confusing.
Okay. Okay. So the motion, I think, was moved and seconded, right? She didn't hear a second.
It's the same sign.
Same size, same size sign.
Well, yeah, we'd wanna just knock that out, although it's gonna be a lot more work involved.
Okay. So moved and seconded for the sign change. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The motion passed. Now, we need a motion to approve the temporary marketing sign, which will be, which will come down when all the units are sold.
The last unit is sold?
Temporary till the last unit is sold. So motion for the temporary sign and for the, and any financing, construction-type signs will meet the sign bylaw.
So moved.
Seconded. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, and we already did the, we did the money, right? For Lawrence County. So we're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Yep. I understand you're doing pretty well in selling them, huh? That's good.
Did you say surprising?
It's surprising how fast.
That's good.
An affordable unit is still required there, so you're working on that, right?
That's gonna be fine.
I think we're now here for the center of the arts. Chuck, come on down again. Danny's here, too. Okay. Dennis, thank you for waiting patiently. We've been taking a while.
And...
Okay, so now we're on the center of the arts, and basically, there are some minor revisions to the parking layout. And the first decision the board needs to make is, we agree this is an administrative change, because they're relatively minor. And if something happens that changes that during the presentation, then we will start the process differently. But let's keep that kind of in mind, that we could maybe go that way. Okay, so Dan, do you wanna lay this out? And just take, let's just take them one at a time, and let's discuss them one at a time, and then let's get right through it.
We can slide them down.
All right. So you've got nine new parking spots.
Yep. Two of those parking spots are over in the main parking area in front of the building itself.
Where the silo used to be.
Exactly. We used to have, the silo used to stick out here, and we had a kind of a bigger island there. The silo went away, so we just brought the parking down. You can kind of see where the, that little dash line is, where the curb cut used to be. So we picked up some spaces there. The other, the other seven are over in the, kind of the auxiliary parking spot now. They're being used as temporary parking spots now. So we thought it would be good, just to make them into permanent parking spots, because it's, it's become a popular place, from what I understand.
And if I remember from your submittal, you have some landscaping that goes out in front, a bunch of bushes of some sort.
Yep.
There was a lot of, we angst a little bit about whether parking there was gonna bother the people across the street, but they're doing it now.
We've been doing it, all done in construction, because we basically had to fence off this whole area, so that no one could, so the only parking we've had has been right here, and it's worked out really well.
We did update the landscaping plan and did enhance that planting there with some more screening, because we were thinking the same thing, the headlights. I'd say it was a night event. So we put some, something there that would screen it pretty much year-round.
The big trees still stay, nickel trees?
This one on the corner here? By the, we're trying hard to keep that. It's in a little bit of tough shape, but we're having an arborist look at it. We have no intention of taking it down.
The thing that worries, kind of bothers me about those parking spaces along Hayden Road, I understand the other two over on the side, but, you know, again, the people across the street, this is a residential neighborhood. We've even, you know, in our town bylaws, tried to advise against parking lots between the building and the street, because of what it does to the streetscape. And I understand they've been using it temporarily, but everybody understands construction and temporary, it's another thing as a permanent fixture. And for these homes, these are homes, these are people's residences, and now they're gonna look at a bunch of cars parked there. I looked at all the back plans, and there was all this nice landscaping, the parking got kept over to the side. And one of the things that's unique about this site is that whereas so many places in town are parking poor, this building is parking rich. We have got so much access to shared parking with the entire high school parking lot around it. It's not like the site needs to squeeze out extra parking places. There's plenty of overflow parking. I'm just sorry to see that happen to the neighbors on a permanent basis on the site that I don't think really, really needs it right on the street. It makes a big difference on the way it looks from the street when you've got a parking lot right up.
Do you overflow park it, or just for special events? We can't use that school parking lot on a day-to-day basis?
Well, on a day-to-day basis, most of that parking lot is empty.
No, no, no.
At their school hours.
No, during the day. Just, I would disagree that we're parking rich, all right? And while the legal agreement we have with the schools, the schools have priority, obviously, as they should, all right? But in the evenings and the nights, excuse me, evenings and weekends, we have the opportunity to coordinate with a single point of contact in the school to say, "We have a play going on here. We have a concert. We have this." They give us the okay, we do it 60 days in advance, everything's, and it works out well. During the day, we have 80 kids going to camp right now at that bar. This place is hopping, and it's not even at full throttle yet. We have 45 parking spots, including the handicap parking spots out here. We need these parking spots to run this facility. We believe firmly that we can landscape this, so that there will not be any headlights penetrating to the streetscape. We believe that's not a difficult issue to do with a berm and with some landscaping. This can be covered. And we've been there over a year now, and we haven't had a single complaint from anyone, without any shrubbery, without any landscaping.
Your peak hours, what are your peak use hours? Your peak use hours are after-school hours.
What you're not understanding is that we're running all day in here, all right? So we're gonna have, these parking spaces are gonna be taken. We're running, we're, I mean, I don't wanna get into the programming about what we're doing, but non-children stuff, adult stuff, is going on in here all day. And it's only gonna grow, because we're becoming a regional center for the arts. So to limit this, I think, would be foolhardy.
I would just like to ask, I know we're treating this as a minor thing, but the Butters were involved in the original site plan because of neighborhood issues. And I would feel that the people that live across the street should be aware of this plan change, because what was promised to them were not six or seven sets of headlights. And, you know, we may see it as minor, but I bet they wouldn't see it as minor. I think, I think the Butters should know. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors to change the site plan that affects neighborhood without them knowing about it. And if they're good with it, then fine.
In relation to that, what are you doing about lighting that for the nighttime events? Those are new parking spaces that weren't there, so you have to light them at night.
There was a light pole on the garage.
We got a light pole that kind of runs that, that kind of that area.
But it wasn't gonna shine out toward Hayden Row?
No, it wasn't gonna shine out toward Hayden.
But with parking spaces there now, you're gonna need to light that, that area.
I don't think we need to light it anymore than it is being, yeah.
Is there a light on this corner? There's gotta be, right?
There's a couple over here.
Yeah. There's probably some street lighting at Hayden Row as well. I don't know for sure. But we're not proposing more lighting.
Okay. Okay, let's see where we are in the seven spots. People think that's a big issue or a little issue?
I don't think it's a big issue, but I think to Claire's point, you would at least wanna let the Butters know that this was gonna be a permanent change. And if they don't have any issue with it...
Okay, so I think we're coming back to, we're coming back to that, the minor change, and we need to do some notification.
But I think before we can approve it, we need to make sure that the Butters are aware and they're okay.
Yeah, that's the notification. Okay?
I can just look up the bush that's proposed. It's an evergreen tree, three foot tall.
Chuck, why don't you do something to mitigate any of those?
Yeah, okay. Well, we should do it.
Okay. Okay. Let's, let's go through the rest of these. I think the issue for most of this is just to make sure the screening is adequate, just, you know, if the bushes aren't there, the rock wall looks nice, you know, as long as somebody hasn't put a sign in it.
Yeah, the other issue was the dumpster was kind of right in the middle of things here now. There's an existing concrete pad over here we just kind of put over there. They put the same type of screening around and fencing around it. And then this would become green space there.
That's an issue with that.
Yeah, it looks like you can get to the dumpster easy.
Looks like it works. That works good.
Okay, anyone have a problem with that? Nobody has a problem with the sidewalk really layout, because silo's not there, so that's kind of, seems to work. Planning of additional landscaping. Other than that, I think, I think at this point, we've kind of said we've gotta notify the people across the street. Is that adequate to hit these people over here, and maybe the one or two people on each side of it? I mean...
Well, these spaces are already here.
Right.
These people, I think, three houses here.
It's those ones there, because there's nobody here, he's got a fence.
Yeah, you send the letter there?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can schedule this next meeting.
Whatever the next meeting is, okay.
And we'll, Elaine will figure out a time circuit for that.
Sounds good.
So we don't forget to go to the notification point, the...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like you're coming right along on the project.
It's coming. It's coming. Labor love.
Okay. We got a letter from Dennis Katz from Hopton Drug. Case, I'm sorry. Anyway, it's too German for me.
I think it's Polish, I'm not sure.
Is it? Okay.
Could you read it?
Okay. From Dennis, and quite frankly, a lot of what you point out, I personally agree with your items that you pointed out. We drafted a response letter to you. Do we have another copy of that? Yeah, give him a...
Thank you.
And we're gonna kind of maybe go through discussing the response, but I think a lot of what Dennis pointed out is that there are parking issues in downtown, a lot of which we know is coming, and a lot of it is due to some success in having some more business coming to downtown, which I think is the goal for everyone. But a lot of the businesses in downtown don't have the parking that you happen to have. You know, you're, you've got a bunch, and I remember from when we did the surveys, it was wide open when we did the surveys, a bunch. Now that you've expanded the compounding business, et cetera, I just noticed you've got more, you park, there's more people, more employees, and you fill up that lot that, I mean, you could have shot a cannon through 10 years ago, or whenever we did it five years ago, something, you know, some of that range, which is good. I mean, but I think, you know, the points that he makes about it's getting filled up, and, you know, we're gonna be, one of the points he brings out of library, and, you know, I mean, we're getting to the point where the half-parking rule might not make sense anymore. And the need for off-street, you know, big blue peas is getting to be, if we're gonna be successful downtown, you know, we've got, we're gonna need to have some off-street parking. But that's what I tried to help Elaine get through in the letter. And, you know, I think we're all looking to see that the downtown is invigorated and vibrant and walkable and all those good things. And, yeah, but Dennis?
From, I don't know this officially, but from what I understand, there's gonna be, the intersection's gonna be widened out, and that there's going to be space taken on both sides of the street from the parking from the sidewalks.
I'm not sure how much from the plan, and I'm trying to remember back, because we haven't seen the plan in the last couple of years from those hearings. I know some of the lanes get a little bit narrower, but we also have to create bike lanes of five feet. And I think maybe the curves get out of, we don't lose much of the parking, or the, no, we lose a lot of parking spots from what I remember the plan. I don't think we lose significant amount of the sidewalk width, per se.
That's what I was, I was concerned about, how much, how much we're gonna lose from the sidewalks, because the people need to walk, because there's no parking spots, they have to walk further distances.
Right.
Where are they gonna walk?
Right. Well, obviously, when you're rebuilding a downtown, and you got all these buildings that are where they are, and those are kind of givens, you know, it's, it's not, you're not starting off with a blank sheet of paper, but this, and this, you know, state plan, which we're in the 2019 budget cycle for construction with the state, and we maintain that portion, from what I understand, they have to do a 25% design review within the next year. And the money that we got... And the money that we got as part of the Masswork Grant for Legacy Farm for North has to be expended, I think, by the end of this year or something.
End of November, I think.
So, the state is going to be coming in to advance the plans for this whole project. And my concern, 'cause I think the project needs to go forward, is that everyone is not gonna be happy with the plan, because all the parking spots are gonna be out there. So, the plan would work if you had the off-street parking, because, you know, you need it. For example, I think the parking lot in front, or spot in front of Vinnie's and the Yogurt Beach, one of the one or two that they actually have, they go away when you start putting two lanes of traffic going through the intersection, plus a left turn lane. And so, and then the other part of this plan, when the state is requiring the relayout of parking, all the parking spaces have to be the standard length of, what, eighteen feet, or whatever, whatever the state standard is, so you can't, you can't cheat like we're currently doing now, so that loses a few, and you can't have state ones right near the crosswalks, and, you know, by the time you kinda put it all together, we lose a lot of spots. And I think it's incumbent upon this, for the success of not only this project before our downtown, is to get off-street parking. And that, I think, was the essence of what your letter is, and I'm gonna say I agree with that aspect of, I tried to outline something, and Elaine really worked hard to flesh it out, to try to explain how we got there a little bit, and kinda put some history behind it, but also try to say, yeah, we need to do some more. And so, anyway, board members, oh, yes.
So, may I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Someone who's hoping to be alive when this all comes together, is that...
And one of our successful downtown businesses.
There you go, there you go.
No, I don't think he does.
And we have three spaces in that, that we don't tell too many people about, 'cause, you know, oh, oh no, oh no, we didn't, you think someone watches this? So, I just wanna point out that the plan I saw dated May 16th of this year, for the engineering for the intersection, doesn't show any straightening of anything. It takes maybe five feet of coales land, if you start at Grove Street, and went up to the entrance, the first entrance on Grove, and you made a straight line, hypotenuse, it goes from five feet to zero.
Yep.
And it doesn't take any spaces, which was the big deal, was gonna straight down the intersection, take spaces.
I think, Bob, there's a revision being made to that plan.
Since May 16th, I hope so.
Yes.
And then, the other thing I'd like to point out, is that there is a sidewalk to nowhere in front of the post office, and I mentioned this once or twice before, that the post office put in when they rebuilt it many years ago, that, the area where the sidewalk now is, and it's a double-width sidewalk. Before, people used to form a lane in the soft shoulder to queue up for the right-hand turn. Now, when that light is red, you oftentimes see nobody in that storage lane, because there's a bottleneck that starts at the old combo, subway. And so, the cause of the bottleneck is the sidewalk for the post office. And I've badgered the town manager and Dave Daltorio about doing something about it, but it doesn't seem anyone has any power to do anything. There seems to be some cookie cutter design from a white tower somewhere that says, well, this is what Hopkinton needs, but it isn't. That intersection is just gonna, it's not gonna be anywhere near the intersection, it could be if that sidewalk stays. Maybe Paul, we need to reach out to Paul, maybe he wants to do something about it, he owns it.
It's, I don't know where the property...
And thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
And particularly, I'm sure, when they get to the 25% design review, there, the state is gonna spend lots of hours talking to, and listening, hopefully, to comments on the plan, and, you know, I, but, anyway, our letter here is to try to give a little context and history, and I think a little support to, I think, the thrust of your letter.
That might be, I think, whoever needs to use my parking.
Yeah.
And I don't know, my concerns are people getting hurt on my property, they're going to other places. That's a concern. I mean, I do wanna work with the town, I do wanna be part of the town, but I also wanna be protective of our rights. And I'm afraid, I just don't know where, I don't know where that starts or where that ends, and I don't know how to be supportive, but not be silly either, 'cause we didn't pay good, good hard cash for this property.
Yes.
And thank God, the, Mr., I think it's Mar, is that his name, the guy next door that always, he's putting up the...
Measure.
Measure, excuse me.
Yeah.
You know, thank God he decided not to put up the second story, 'cause where would these people park? I just don't see it.
I mean, there's a self-limiting type thing that happens, if you build it, they might not come, because they can't get there.
See, once it, it becomes a blank.
Yep.
It really does become a blank. People know that they're gonna have a hassle parking, they're gonna avoid it.
And, you know, I think the letter also tried to say that the one size, one spot, you know, if you converted Center School to a parking area as a reuse, that really doesn't solve the problem, because people in Hopkinton, you know, just don't...
They're not gonna walk four blocks.
They're not gonna walk four blocks. I mean, it's, it's...
Well, unless they're willing to walk four blocks, I mean, I don't see where there's an answer, because you can't get blood out of a stone. You've got these properties that were built, you know, pre-automobile, and, you know, population wants to park right in front or not at all, and, you know, if we built something municipal, which we should, it's gonna be not close to something, depending on where you're going. I mean, people think the walking from the Common down to downtown is too far, which is nothing by city standards.
Well, as, yes, and as an example, I had a meeting at eight o'clock this morning in Town Hall, and there was a line coming eastbound, and I said, oh, do I wanna merge into that? So I parked at the Common, which is, I will admit, this is the first for me in thirty-something years of parking to the Common to come to the Town Hall. And, you know, I'm supposed to be exercising more these days, and so I didn't mind the one-block walk, and it was a kind of a nice day and all that good stuff, but if it had been raining or snowing, I, 'cause there was plenty of parking at eight o'clock this morning in front of Town Hall, and that would be my normal thing. But I took a walk today, but it wasn't all that bad, I guess, but that's the new me.
And yet, you know, and we're not Wellesley, but the town of Wellesley, they've got a couple municipal lots that are highly inadequate and they're hard to find, and then they've just got all this commercial, and every man for himself, and if you can't find a place to park, that's just too bad. And they, a long time ago, I guess, gave up on trying to have parking requirements because they couldn't, they had a downtown that didn't have the space. And I went down there one time, I think, it probably took me longer to find a parking place, and it'd taken me to drive from Hopkinton to Wellesley, and I parked probably a twenty-minute walk away. And, you know, we're not Wellesley.
It's about to the point where, you know, there's two or three spot, I mean, the police station was in the budget, it got shelled with the free cash issue, but that'll come back, that'll probably solve some of the western Grove Street, Main Street, you know, problems with additional spots there, because the package store over on the other side there loses all the spots there with lanes additions.
Three thirty this afternoon, it was eighty-five degrees, was a single person in Yogurt Beach, they were, they were parking a lot of spots up and down the street, it was empty, so, sorry.
They usually come out around, they come out around, I just had to bring this, they come around seven o'clock, that's when we usually come out. And usually the slam from, when I was in the ice cream business, that was from seven to nine, ten.
So, anyway.
Definitely gonna need some municipal parking.
Yeah.
And it has to be close. And we can get people to, we're not gonna get people to change their habits, we're not gonna want to walk, especially when it's raining and snowing.
Are there municipal options?
Well, I know the selectmen have been negotiating with Beals about this property behind it.
Have you spoken with the selectmen about, I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead.
Was this sent on to the selectmen as well, or just to, just to us?
We were sent to the selectmen. So, I don't think it's sent on to the selectmen, no.
Do they control parking?
They would be the ones to develop municipal parking. They would come from that side. I wondered whether, when you do have individual events sometimes, like Robert had a picture of some kind of a road race, there's often road races in the spring, and apparently it seemed they had taken up all the downtown parking places. If, you know, we couldn't at least work with some of these entities that are scheduling events in town, like a race, to ask the race organizers to, you know, in their race materials, ask their participants not, like, designate an area, whether it's behind Center School or something like that, to ask that, you know, if we're hosting them, that they be good guests and not take all the spaces and hurt the downtown merchants during the time of their race. These people are runners, they oughta be able to walk a few blocks, but maybe we could be a little more proactive with, when there are individual events that come into town that, you know, could take all the spots.
Okay, Chairman, if I may add to what Claire's saying, because she did mention something I had on. I just had it on Saturday, as I checked my webcam from home, I noticed that there was a barrel in front of Lovely Lady Salon, and, because she needed to say that, because it wasn't a race. The running club takes up the spaces in the downtown, they meet in the downtown, and they go off running.
Great.
For, I don't know if it's an hour or two or what, and they, they claim that the one or two or three, however many go get a coffee, if they're gonna may later on, not considering that there might've been another ten or twenty people who wanted yogurt or wanted coffee, that doesn't matter, but, you know, if someone from the board spoke with them, because they told me that after I put that photo up, oh, there was quite a controversy on their closed Facebook page.
Okay. Okay, let's try, 'cause we're running out of time here for the meeting. Are there any comments, questions from the board members about the letter, suggestions or changes, or anything like that? Seeing none, entertain a motion to, to sign the letter for the, for coming from the board to planning board?
Someone's...
Move and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries.
Where's this letter go?
Well, it's gonna come back, it will be an official letter, you'll get it, get the signature, and without a draft, and things like that. And, okay, let's kinda run through a couple things. Let's talk about small subdivisions next, at our next meeting, if we can put that off. Thank you, Dennis, and thank you for staying. We can put the small subdivisions off to one of our next meetings, we were just gonna, Elaine and I, when we talked about the first thing tonight, said, well, you know, maybe we oughta have more of a policy talked about in general, and then try to fit things to the policy.
Makes sense.
And, you know, so, let's talk about that and think about it for the next one. Master plan update, the community facilities and services, Elaine?
I distributed that, so, I'll forward that, the word version, to remember who's assigned, which I forgot to say.
Can you clarify what our job is? 'Cause you did all the work of the updating, and then are those poor souls who volunteered, that would be me and John, are we supposed to work on the goals, are we supposed to...
Yeah, come up with goals and recommendations, and read through the...
Based on your draft.
See if there's anything's missing, maybe things to justify the goals and recommendations that you're coming up with as well.
Okay, all right, so maybe we'll...
Okay. And we're gonna get serious about it, probably, we gotta put the schedule together per Fran's comments, too. We're gonna work backwards and come up with a way to get here before, so we approve it in amongst all the stuff for town meeting by next spring, at the latest. Okay. Minutes for the sixth of July, 2015, anyone have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion that, if it is written.
Second.
Move and seconded, further discussions, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, how about minutes for the thirteenth of December, or of July, 2015? Any comments, questions, revisions? Seeing none, I'll entertain some motions.
So, move?
Move. And second, motion on the table is to approve the minutes for July 13th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. We already talked at beginning of meeting, zoning advisory committee, please volunteer.
Yes.
Correspondents, we have a Wayne Davies' letter requesting rezoning at the next town meeting of the property that's got the, the teeth guy.
Pediatric dentist.
The one that, on Hayton Row.
What, Row? He's got what? So, for the next meeting, we received correspondence after this, after this stuff went out, from Wayne Davies representing three property owners on Hayton Row, looking to extend the commercial business district, more than, like, three parts.
Up to where? Where in Hayton Row?
It includes the pediatric dentist, so it's seventy-nine, seventy-one, eighty-one and eighty-two.
It'd go from Irvine's northward.
Up where it merges with Grove Street.
Yes.
So, that'll be the next meeting.
So, there'll be some discussion about that. Roy McDowell had some emails, and he has, this had to do with mitigation timing with a traffic study. He suggested, in his latest correspondence, that while the traffic study is due in July, that it's better to do traffic studies when the school's in session, and we'd like to have it done until September. And I think that's a good, good thing to do. And so, basically, today, all I wanna do is, is basically say we're not gonna beat them up, and we'll schedule it on our next meeting to, to delay it or approve the delay. Good. And setting meeting minute dates for September through December, I think Elaine had some proposed dates, if anyone had, it looked like you avoided all the Monday holidays.
But in this, but there's two meetings back to back.
There's two meetings back to back. We...
The fourteenth, that would be, September fourteenth, that would be if it comes to its Russia shop.
I'm, we might have to meet another day in December. I suspect we're gonna get Legacy North plans coming in soon. We're expected, I think, to get library plans in soon. Hopefully, we'll finish the solar soon.
DPW?
DPW Garage will be coming in this, this...
Cycle.
This cycle, so they can get construction in spring.
Are they looking at a fall town meeting? I couldn't hear what you were discussing, as we were mentioning.
What?
I think they're all set.
The DPW is all set.
So, probably not a fall town meeting.
No, 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 no.
There will be one.
No, no, I said, are we looking to have a fall town meeting?
Yes.
We are.
The, we didn't have any, able to spend the free cash money, and there was like, there was like a million dollars worth of projects that got postponed from May.
So it wasn't certified, correct?
'Cause it wasn't certified. I don't know whether it's certified yet or not.
So, what are they looking at, November, October?
I think the elementary school building committee wants one in November.
Early November, right.
I think that's what they're planning for, but they're gonna be meeting with the state, I think, shortly. I'm not exactly, I don't remember, there's... I'm not exactly, I don't remember the decision. Okay, anything, board members' comments, any future agenda items, please speak up to me or Elaine in the in-between, because we'll be happy to add them to it. And, other than that, I think that's everything that seems to be going on, that we're really involved in at this point. Construction season is well underway.
Absolutely.
And, anyway, I think we concluded our business, it took longer than I thought today, but we had a lot of good discussions, I think. So, look for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. Move and seconded, for adjourn, who else wants to stay, say no, everyone else, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries.